Let's part the mists of Avalon and meet Merlin around the sacred fire.
Hello friends, hello and welcome to Merlin's... We're working with Merlin today, like Merlin's Magicorium. Higher Magical Arts Study Session #1. Hmm, not exactly sure what we're gonna talk about with Merlin today. So this is kind of like a channeling on the fly, fly by the seat of your pants. Got my little heart there. So before we go any further, let me wrap us all in love light and light love, inviting in the guides who overlay TLC for the soul, Archangel Michael, Archangel Metatron, Pleiadians, Master Merlin. They're saying our higher selves, our higher selves, to be able to reach up to higher frequencies and receive this message because it is about working with higher magical arts. What does that even mean? What does that even mean? So is there a place you want us to meet you at, Merlin? Okay, so he wants to meet in Avalon, which is where Merlin and I have done a ton of magical work together. It's a very comfortable, safe space. So in order to get there, we have to get on the boat and go through the mists of Avalon together. And only the high priestesses of Avalon and Merlin and those with the sacred key of purient intent in your heart are able to enter through the mists, through the gates of Avalon to this teaching center, this higher learning space. So if you will, let's take a couple of deep breaths together first. I invite you to come up out of your space wherever you're sitting at or lying down or walking around. They're saying this can be moving, moving around. You don't have to be in a deep meditative state to receive these messages, but you do need to be in a high vibe frequency field. So Avalon is gonna be that space container for that right now. And many of you are familiar with that space. So if you'll meet me, you're going to walk, there's a path that's going to open up before you and you're going to walk down to what becomes the water's edge. And there's a boat there waiting for you. I'm in the boat saying, "Come on, come get in with me, come get into the boat." And we have the gatekeepers of Avalon are always here to help ferry us across the waters and help us get through the mists. So I'm gonna make sure everyone's on the boat. And then the gatekeepers are going to start taking us, kind of rowing the boat till we reach the gateway to Avalon, which is the mists, shrouding Avalon in high frequencies. Then the asking for permission to part the mists. The mists are parting and we are able to, whoa, so many chills, we are able to enter through the gates of Avalon as the mists will close behind us, sealing us in a protective layer that is this magical mystery school. Avalon, higher teachings. And as the boat comes to rest upon the shores of Avalon, you're helped to disembark by the gatekeepers and other students of Avalon who are here to greet us. They have a space for us around the fire. That's something about Avalon, there's always a space for you around the sacred fires, around the fire pit or the learning, teaching circle. There's always a space for you. So find your space around the sacred fire. And I'm waiting for Merlin. I feel him, but I feel him like watching us enter and like checking us out. Why is he checking us out? He's scanning our energy fields. Before he drops in, he wants to bring in, he wants me to bring in some energy clearing because everyone's frequency field needs to be very clear in order to assimilate these messages because he's telling me that what the message, what the messages are gonna do is unlock these healing keys within you. So he's like, that's all I'm gonna say for right now about it. So, alright, so we're gonna bring in healing guides in this safe sacred space around the waters of Avalon. The Balthys, the little healing, like healing, I call it healing huts or healing buildings. Creatures of Avalon are stepping into this circle to bring you something that you most need right now. So a different animal guide or Avalon's spirit guide could be approaching you now. It's gonna be different, a different guide for each one of you. And they're taking a light from their heart space and they're placing that heart space light into your heart space. Take a deep breath in. It's like clearing the back heart chakra because I feel a lot of release between the shoulder blades. Relief, resonance, peace, calm. And coming to join me by my side is our brother, our soul brother Merlin, Master Merlin. And the many aspects of Merlin, Merlin the Ascension Guide, Merlin the Spiritual Warrior, Merlin the Soul Brother, Merlin the Master Healer, Merlin the Higher Magical Arts Dealer. He's trying to say this doesn't have to be so serious. I know, he's like, "You always get so serious." Like, "I know." Oh, that's right, because Merlin was here to tell us that healing through the higher magical arts could be fun and didn't have to be so heavy and didn't have to be so, it has, it's like humble, it is humbling and reverent, but it doesn't have to be so, so, like so serious. He's like, "Even you, dear one, you are much too serious right now." So Merlin, we have a group of soul friends here around this sacred fire and we're calling this a Higher Magical Arts Study Healing Session. So kind of coming in without a lot to go on. And so what do you want us to focus on in this study session? Your art of being and the art of healing have much in common. The art of being is a feeling, a frequency and a deciding factor in how you're able to absorb healing energy. When there's resistance to healing, resistance in the body, resistance in the mental energies, the thoughts, resistance in the emotions, then healing becomes much more of a challenge to you, the person needing healing. And this could be, if you are a healer, to anyone you're working on, this resistance has to be cleared in order for healing to happen. And what does it mean to clear resistance? It's a steady state of allowing, a steady state of higher vibrational frequency and it takes practice, it takes intent and purpose and it takes diligence to ensure that you're a clear channel for healing to happen within you and around you. So as part of this study group that we've put together here of higher souls who are willing to do this work together in this sacred space, in this container that is Higher Magical Arts Healing in Avalon, we come to you with these short group sessions to give you the information, the guidance, the codes and the frequencies that will help you and also allow you to help others around you. Because this is a practice, a practice of staying in a vibration and frequency that releases resistance to that around it. Because when there's no resistance, then healing can automatically happen because there's nothing blocking you from being receptive. So Merlin, describe resistance so that everyone here is on the same page with what that means because it could mean different things to different people. Oh, he's showing me chaotic energy. It's kind of scary. He's like, "Resistance is chaotic energy within you or that you allowed to be around you that causes the energy to break." So we're talking about that water experiment. I don't remember the guy's name, the Japanese guy with the water experiments and the taking water and even ice shards and sending them loving energy and those water droplets and ice crystals and things forming very beautiful patterns and frequencies and shapes. All of those patterns and frequencies and shapes are receptive patterns conducive to higher healing arts. But when you become chaos through frenetic energy, frenetic energy could be chaotic thinking, misuse of power, lack of faith, distrust in the universe, loss of hope or other lower vibrational emotions, anything that's not love and forgiveness and grace and mercy, anything that's the opposite of these things, even fear, even fear that you feel you have no control over. You can control your thoughts and your feelings and the actions and movements of your body, but it takes much practice in order to become the master of your own reality. And he says, "This is so timely right now because the planet is going through so much chaos and chaos brings with it change, but do we always have to change through being chaotic? Is there another higher magical way to bring in change that doesn't involve feeling like there's chaos that has to happen around you?" Because he's like, "My sister here, she's talking about me. Now I see the, he sees, it's true, I see the number 555, which used to, way back when in my journey, 555 was, I used to think it was like great luck, like every time I see 555, great things always happen to me." And he's like, "Now what do you do, sister?" And I said, "Now when I see 555, I'm like, 'Oh my God, something bad's gonna happen.'" Because there've been some times where 555 has shown up and chaotic or frenetic energy has come in to shake things up and bring about change. And he's saying, "So now it's left an imprint on me where I see 555 and I have an auto, I have, I do, I have an automatic negative reaction in my thoughts, my body tenses up, I get anxiety when I see 555 and I'm like, I don't want anything to do with 555 or anything that's coming that has to do with 555. And the number that used to be so magical and mystical and fun and exciting has become a number that I'm like, I just get very fearful when I see it." So I don't mind being the test subject here, by the way. And Merlin and I kind of call each other out a lot of the times anyway, but so 555, yeah, so chaotic and frenetic energy. He's like, "It doesn't do you any good, but it takes, it's like a lifelong practice." And I think that for those of you that are here and are going to be drawn to these study sessions with Merlin and I and whoever else, you know, comes in for these is it's a, it's a practice that we have to keep practicing. It's part of your spiritual practice, just like your meditation, just like getting out in nature. These Higher Magical Arts Studies, which are about right now, that were about the art of allowing, the art of the, of least resistance and the art of being able to manage your personal power so that be your thoughts, your actions and your emotions. It's very, very powerful and you'll find these same teachings in many different places. The Taoist principles are all about this and I've talked about, you know, Wayne Dyer and some of the things he's worked with Lao Tzu on with all of the Taoist principles and putting those in easy to understand, taking all the verses of the Tao and putting them in easy, like everyday understandings. And so I feel like we have the Taoist masters joining us here as well, helping us to that highest, when, when people hear higher magical arts, even myself, I was like, I, I'm thinking it has to be some other worldly principles that, or you know, dark magic or something has to come in to help us with this healing and it's like dark magic is coming with, got us where we were at, where we're at right now, being in fear of natural magic and natural order and that nature and the natural elements that natural magic got twisted by dark magic. And I told you, I think I mentioned somewhere as Light Sunday that he might talk, talk about dark magic a little bit. And the dark side, which did come up in this week's energy about the, the dark side. And the dark side is within you as well as outside of you. And it's your own dark feelings that if you don't, if you let them linger and if you don't learn how to handle them and take care of them, those are the things that are going to lead to the resistance within you and then thus become resistance outside of you because what happens within becomes, you know, is a reflection. Your outer world's a reflection of your inner world and he's like, "Why did dark magic even perpetuate to begin with? Why are we in this situation we're in now where we have to overcome all of this fear, all of this anxiety, all of these lower energies, the dark ages, all of this stuff to get back to this place where it's just so high vibrational? How did we fall so far as a, as a collective consciousness, being humanity, that we're having to pull ourselves and drag ourselves up through these, through this dross to get back to a place where we should just be so trusting and receptive and accepting of heaven, for lack of a better word, the guides, the angels, the higher light councils, the higher consciousness beings, so we can just fall into them and their guidance and their advice and their wisdom and the magic that's here to assist us when we are in this art of allowing? And how can it be fun? Because there's, she's like, he's like, even as she's talking about it in her body, she's like, she's frenetic. "Why am I frenetic?" "Because you still doubt." Even after, yeah, he's like, "Even after all this time, spirit's been showing you these amazing manifestations, you still doubt, you still doubt, you just, you still doubt. Why, why, why do we do that as human beings? And is our human beings the only ones still doubting right now on the planet? Because we're here to help raise the, help Gaia, help Earth raise its consciousness and if it's all of like a we're all in this thing together where we're all trying to raise our consciousness to help the planet ascend and the planet ascends and that helps us ascend, but is it just humans that are still in this doubting? He's like, "No, other kingdoms and other races are working on this too, working to overcome this darkness that has perpetuated itself since," he just keeps saying, "since the dark ages." So dark ages can mean many different things to many different people, but there have been times on the planet where it's been very, very dense energy and the planet is trying to shed those energies and as she's shedding them, you're feeling that shedding and it brings up all this stuff in you that is residue, it remains, it sticks inside your energy field like black goo. And he's like, "Even though you," he's talking to me too, but me talking to you, "but even though you, us, even though I have been shedding dark energies and we have been doing this soul work for what seems like eons or at least in this lifetime, it seems like we just keep peeling the layers back and peeling the layers back and peeling the layers back, that still," he says, "my, my soul sister," he's talking to me, "still has all these doubts and still is scared of dark factions." So there may be past life imprints because some of these things, if they're very traumatic, carry through with the soul and we continue to heal them. And I just did a forgiveness meditation with Master Ko before I came to this session and Master Ko was doing, doing forgiveness and healing and he's like, "What if these are deep imprinted, you know, things you have that you're working on?" He's like, "You just have to keep doing the work, the healing work over and over and over again until the the reactions are gone." Or they become, each time, they should become less and less and less because energetically, these are seeds within the chakras that are being triggered when something comes up. And I don't want to go into the whole last week thing, but this week I still have this residue of this crazy thing that came up last week, which was really meant to like be a blessing. It really was meant to be like a blessing in disguise of like spirit trying to show me like, "See, everything's gonna be fine." But even this week, I still have this residue where I wake up every morning and I'm anxious. I'm like, "Oh my God, is that gonna happen again?" If you show me 55, if I see 555, I'm like, I get all tensed up and he's like, "She had, and they're, they're, you're using me as an example because you're here and I'm here as your, your spiritual guide, your spiritual teacher for these teachings and so you may be holding me on some pedestal of like, 'Oh, she's done all this work and she doesn't have anything left to do.'" It's like, "No, we all do, everybody does." And she's human just like you are and she's still going, still going through it, just like you are. But every time I go through it, it makes me wiser, it makes me stronger and it helps me understand how the energy is working so that when it comes up, it's probably gonna come up again, it will have less of an impact each time. These dark seeds, we heal them and they get smaller and smaller until, just like, just like when you were little or right when you go like, "These ghosts have no power over me anymore," whatever, "these demons have no power over me." Till these thought forms and these things that are causing this have no power over you anymore. And so how, he's like, "How can you make it fun?" Because he's like, "You can suffer through this healing." It's like, or you can just try to have fun with it. Now, I would say it takes, he just keeps saying, "It takes a lot of practice." Because there was like some stuff that happened to me like a year ago and I was like, "Oh, this is easy." Even though it seemed very like dun, 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 you know, "This is gonna be horrible." For whatever reason, I know, and I said that, I was like, "Why last year was I really okay with this?" And now it's really like kind of bothering me again. And he's like, "Because you've given your power away to it and to the time that it's taking to clear these things." So it's true because last year when these things came up, it's been a year, it was, the whole nodes of fate last year really, really were very, very challenging for me. But when the things started coming up last year, I was like, "Oh, this is new, but oh, look, I can handle it and I would handle it." And then spirit would give me, spirit would show me through 3D manifestations that everything was fine. So it was building like this trust, respect again with the universe and with my guides that when they told me everything was gonna be okay and they would give me action steps to follow, it would always, always be backed up with the divine reciprocity that everything was fine through the 3D manifestations that came about. But as time wore on, and here I am now a year later, they're saying "You're too focused on the time that it's taking." So you're like, "Oh, I've been doing this a really long time. Why are these things still happening? Why are these triggers still coming up? Haven't I already dealt with all of this stuff?" Whatever it is, karma clearing or distrust of the universe, that's a big one, distrust of the universe. Why are you, after all, we did, we had this conversation this morning too, I think, as prep for this. It's like, after all these manifestations, we've shown you that everything's fine, that you're fully supported, that you're being taken care of by the universe on your soul mission, so your soul purpose. Why do you still continue to distrust that and not just allow what needs to come to you to come to you? How, how do we have more fun with that? Uh, how do we have fun when this stuff comes up? How do we flow with these lessons? Because everybody's got a lesson or a thing they're working on. Is it the art of allowing? Is it distrust of the universe or your guides or whatever? Um, yeah, because this has been a while too. This is a big one. I think these things for you, the, you people that are here, these are things that are really big, um, big soul things that need to be healed, maybe over lifetimes that you're carrying with you. Because I can remember when my journey, it didn't, wasn't first starting, but let's, this was like 2018. I had attracted a soul sister to me who was also a very gifted healer and we did a lot of Instagram lives together. And we talked offline and um, I remember talking to her one day about something. I don't know what messages I had for her and she had messages for me. So we were just, you know, DMing or whatever. And she's like, my guides say that you don't trust me. And I was like, oh, I don't, it's not my intent, you know, and she's like, I don't, you know, why? And I'm like, I don't know, I don't know. And so this, this for me is a big one, this distrust of, of stuff. So distrusting the universe. And it's, so here we are, it's seven years later, I'm still, I'm still working on it. And the triggers can be something, Merlin's like, the triggers can be very subtle. And it just like blows me all out of proportion and I get, I get resistance right away. I can feel it in my body. Because if I come to any sessions with you guys, I check all my, check my emotional, does my emotional body need healing? These are the things we need to check. Does my, does your emotional body need healing? I do it through muscle testing. So I'll always ask, um, does my aura need clearing? Does my emotional body need clearing? Does my mental body need clearing? Does my physical body need clearing? Do my chakras need clearing? Do I have any chords that need to be cut? Um, and if I get a no on all of those, then I know right away that I'm in this perfect art of allowing and this non-resistance um, energy feel, you know, energy frequency, which is where these higher magical arts and these higher magical frequencies can reach us. But as soon as for me, one of my little dark seeds is triggered by something that the universe does, they'll, they're gonna bring in these lessons to keep growing you. As soon as that one of those is triggered, um, I can vary, I can become out of alignment like that because my thoughts will race like, oh my God. It causes like a stress response in my body, like a PTSD or like a trauma response. And um, I can go out of alignment like that. And I can be like, my mental body, my thoughts, your thoughts race, your mental body jams up with negative thought forms, which then jams your emotions, then become involved and your emotional body jams up with negative thought forms. And so to stay in alignment throughout the day means to have this high vibrational frequency of trust and faith and hope in higher power, in the divine plan for your life, trust in your higher self and that, and your guides, that you are being led and that there is this magical map of your life. It's not just this higgledy piggledy like um, happenstance and randomness about your journey, which I think we can sometimes get thrown off by like, ah, is anybody helping me manage what's happening here? Is it just a bunch of randomness? And they're like, no, it's not random acts. It's actually very divinely orchestrated acts. And I'm sorry if I'm not looking at the camera, I'm channeling all this with my eyes closed this whole time, but it's very divinely orchestrated acts. Situations. And you always hear that, like, it's not happening to you, it's happening for you. And they're, and Merlin's like, yeah. Tammy thinks that, Tammy thinks that all these things are happening to, to hurt her and to um, make her fall off her path like on purpose. And it's like, they're not. They're happening to grow you because right, your guides are supposed to be here to help you navigate your soul journey. They're not here to like trip you up and make you fall. But I think for those of you that are here with me, and you can tell by my voice, it hits a chord because I'm like, yeah. I feel like before, so Merlin's like, okay, let me step in. He's like, before you had something in a past life or a past lives, which was what you interpreted to be a trauma response to a situation that occurred for you. And that continues to stay with you. And I think over time too, it has become muddled in the energy field. Muddled in the energy field to where your perception of what happened has like grown like a big scary monster. So I think that's true. I think that something may have happened way back when. And every time it gets triggered, the stress response turns it into a bigger demon than it actually is. So how do we then, how do we do this? How do we work on this? Do we need a healing session? Or because we're, we're calling this study session number one, which he's saying is setting the stage for future sessions to come, which are going to be combinations of energy work, guidance, um, healing and a roadmap to follow. So that when you feel like you're getting off track, you can more easily get on, back on track. Okay. Merlin and I work together very symbiotically. I've been worked, worked with him through many different lifetimes. So it's almost like we're just like telepathically connected here as soul brother and soul sister. Um, anything else then, since we're calling this an introductory and we're at 36 minutes? Anything else we want to share? He's like, the next time we come to this space, he wants me to create some visuals for us that are gonna be this roadmap that he wants us to um, start working on together as a collective healing group. Yeah, he's like, let's, let's give you something concrete. He's like, now you've got the, the gist of what we're trying to get to here. Let's then start giving you something concrete. 3D that you can actually do in your life every day to start helping with some of these things. Um, and what is the fun part? I want to know. The fun part is what? You get to work with me. The fun part is if you see this as fun, then it will be. If you see this as drudgery and more shadow work and more crap you have to clear out of your energy field and you're tired of doing shadow work and you're tired of all this stuff. Because like, that's what it's gonna be. So we'll need to set very clear intentions that this is supposed to be fun and magical. Even though it is having to work with our shadows. So I'm excited to see that, you know. And I'm excited to work together with this very special friend. Merlin's a very special friend of mine. And um, I'm excited to work with you all and share these concepts and these higher teachings um, from the masters. So Merlin, do you have anything else to add? Okay, so he says, we are complete for now. So, but we can't just zip out of Avalon. He's like, how do we leave Avalon? The same way you came in. So we need to um, almost like, what is this? Re-acclimate yourself. This will be part of grounding in because we've been in a very high vibrational space. And some of the things that I've talked about today may have brought up some things in you, some emotions or some feelings to where you're like, let's get to session number two, where you can give me the practical steps and all that. So let's just allow the guides here to clear our energy fields one more time. He's like, cause he wants you to become, he wants you to get excited about coming to Avalon and not see it as a place. So I feel like we're gonna do some stuff here, um, you know, journeying and meditatively and through the work that we're gonna do. Um, that's also fun and exciting. So let's clear anything there before we get back on the boat. So your guide will release you, whoever's been hanging out with you, holding space with you during this session will release you. And you'll make your way back to the spirit boat. And I'm gonna thank, I want to thank you, thank you, thank you, Brother Merlin, Master Merlin, for working with us again, working with me and working with all of us here on these mystical, magical teachers, teachers and teachings. We all are here to just be what like, say, Sarmalan says, better humans, better planet. A lot of divine masculines showing up for this. So make your way back to the spirit boat. Thank you, Merlin. Thank you, Avalon. Until we meet again. And I think everybody's getting into the boat. And the guardians of the gate are going to take us back out the way we came into Avalon. Back through the mists. And back to the shores we started out on. As we disembark from the boat and thank, thank the guardians of the gates of Avalon. Thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing us to pass through these sacred portals. Thank you for allowing us to be here in this space. You can make your way back wherever you started your journey within yourself, within your body. Coming back into your surroundings, wiggling fingers and toes, opening your eyes and looking around you. We're back. All right, friends, I don't know worms, totally watery eyes, all this channeling. But until we meet again, friends, I hope um, you're excited for this healing series with Merlin. And um, I don't guess I don't have anything else either. So I will bid you a fun farewell and we will talk to you all again soon. Take care.